Focuses time, Ms. Sherri White-Williams, do you think we should go ahead and get started?
Yes, why don't we? I don't see Dr. Sakobi Wilson, but I expect he'll be joining us anytime. And I've changed the order of the presenters, so he should be on by the time we get to him.
Sounds perfect. Well, I guess with that being said, I'll go ahead and I'll read the ethics statement, but if we'll just remember that we don't have a forum at this time. And of course, if we do at any point, Renee, you'll just let us know. We greatly appreciate it. So in accordance with the state government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. If any board member has any known conflict of interest or is aware of facts that may create the appearance of such conflict with respect to any matters coming before the board today, please identify the conflict or the facts that might create the appearance of a conflict to ensure that any inappropriate participation in that matter may be avoided. If at any time any new matter raises a conflict during the meeting, please be sure to identify it at that time. I also want to remind folks that we are being recorded. This meeting is recorded, so just be aware of that. And I'll just kindly ask you to please mute yourselves if you're not speaking. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Renee to do the roll call, please.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Sorry, one second. My computer's having a moment. Here we go. Okay. Jeff Anstead. William Barber III. Veronica Carter. Randy Haven O'Donnell. Jim Johnson. Marion Johnson Thompson. Carolina Fonseca Jimenez.
Present.
Deepak Kumar. Danell Lobdell. I know I saw her there. I'll go ahead and say present because I see her on the screen. She might be having technical issues. Marilyn Marsh Robinson. Naima Muhammad.
Yeah.
Rodney Sadler Jr. Carlos Velasquez.
Here.
Elke Wale.
Here, present.
Sherri White Williamson.
Present.
Lamisha Whittington.
Present.
All right, that's all. I'll turn it back over.
Sounds good. Thank you, Renee. I appreciate everybody being with us this evening. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our board member, Ms. Sherri White Williamson. She's going to be running through the meeting content for today. Ms. Sherri White Williamson, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Carolina. It's a pleasure to join all of you all today and to have the panel that we have to discuss a very important topic. This will actually help us as a board to prepare recommendations that we hope to be able to present to the DEQ later this year. I am not going to spend a lot of time introducing folks because what they have to say is more important than my introduction. So quickly run through the order since we've changed the order of presenters. Our first two presenters will be Caitlin King and Lindsay Savelli, who are students at the Gilling School of Public Health at UNC Chapel Hill, who will give us an intro to cumulative impacts. The second person will be Deja Williams, who was with Clean Air NC to talk about citizen science. The third presenter will be Crystal Lee Powell Jackson, who is with RTI, and will talk about the need to incorporate public health data into any tool. The fourth presenter will be Dr. Sakobi Wilson, who we've heard from before, but who has been very instrumental in creating the tool in the state of Maryland. And finally, we'll hear from Jasmine Washington, who is with the Southern Environmental Law Center, and we'll talk about the significance of Title VI and cumulative impacts. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin and Lindsay for them to start the discussion. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for that introduction. I don't, I think someone has ours slides. Oh, perfect.
Awesome. Yes. Thank you, Sherri, for the introduction. So, good evening, y'all. My name is Caitlin, and I'm here with Lindsay to discuss cumulative impacts in the permitting process. The aims of our presentation include to identify themes in the terms used to define cumulative impacts, review hazards mapping tools to identify common and unique indicators that are used to characterize a community's level of stress or burden, as well as to assess how cities and states have already been incorporating cumulative impacts into zoning and permitting. Next slide, please. Today, we will address the quote-unquote "why" for considering cumulative impacts in environmental policy, our methods and findings, limitations and barriers, and lastly, policy implications for North Carolina. Next slide, please. So why consider cumulative impacts in environmental policy in the first place? There are many communities that face a disproportionate burden due to environmental racism, resulting in negative human health outcomes. Stresses such as multiple sources of pollution and climate change can act together to further exacerbate health issues. Consideration of these stressors when reviewing permits would prevent additional harm to these communities. Next slide, please. Our methods involved examining 25 peer-reviewed articles and 56 gray literature reports. We identified frameworks for conducting cumulative impacts assessments and examples of cumulative impacts in multiple state environmental policies. We also examined multiple hazards mapping tools that Dr. Sakobi Wilson graciously shared with us. Next slide, please. Next, we'll discuss our findings from the literature. Next slide, please. We examined 37 definitions from various organizations, government agencies, et cetera, and found that the cumulative impacts definition from the California Environmental Protection Agency was the most comprehensive. We liked how this definition acknowledged socioeconomic factors and sensitive populations, for example. We also liked how this definition specifically referenced accidental pollution. However, we recognize that this definition could be even more comprehensive. Next slide, please. This table shows common and novel factors that are included in cumulative impacts definitions across the literature. While it was quite common for definitions to address chemical stressors, number of projects, et cetera, it was rare for definitions to address more encompassing factors, such as allostatic load, psychosocial factors, and impacts related to climate change. Next slide, please.
So next, we'll cover the different types of hazard mapping tools. Next slide, please. So there are 24 mapping tools from different, for 15 states and federal organizations, which are indicated by the red stars on this map, and there are three tools in North Carolina. And these tools are used primarily to map and quantify environmental hazard indicators to identify overburdened communities with considerations for population demographics. And states do differ in how they define an overburdened or vulnerable community. Next slide, please. And so this spreadsheet just shows our technique for analyzing the different tools, and we compared the type and number of indicators across the different tools in various states. And the North Carolina tools are highlighted in blue. Next slide, please. And we'll just quickly cover the three state tools. So this is the DEQ Environmental Justice Mapping Tool, which looks at demographics and health indicators like heart disease. Next slide. This is EnviroScan, which uses census tract and county-level data. And so this specific image just shows COVID-19 deaths in dark purple with superfund sites highlighted in yellow. Next slide. And then this is the Community Mapping System Tool by NCDQ, and this tool includes different filters for types of sites and permits, like landfills and stormwater permits. Next slide, please. And so then we just wanted to summarize, looking at the three North Carolina tools versus other state tools, and we found different similarities and differences. And so all tools tend to include some sort of indicator related to health and demographic information, as well as air, water, and waste pollution, truck traffic, and lead exposure. North Carolina tools are unique in that they consider different compliance metrics like violations, as well as flood and COVID-19 indicators, as we saw in the EnviroScan tool. However, based on examples from other states, we could expand North Carolina tools to include a broader range of demographic information, like income, age, and education, which we now have impacts on health, as well as considerations for housing burden, blight, and overcrowding, and climate change. Next slide, please. So next, we'll talk about how to assess cumulative impacts in the different frameworks we found. Next slide, please. And so it's important to conduct cumulative impact assessments, or what I'll call CIAs, with community input and to utilize both quantitative and qualitative data. And so bars that get all considered CIAs from community, state, and federal levels for the three steps recommended by the EPA. And we thought this could be useful to the board in thinking about how to assess cumulative impacts. So I won't have time to run through each specific example, but I'll cover each of the three EPA steps briefly. So the first step on this slide is planning, scoping, and problem formulation. And this considers participants, approaches, different types of stressors, and conceptual models. And we thought it would be useful to consider both the community and state level. Next slide, please. So the second step is risk analysis, and this includes exposure, hazard, and dose-response information used to quantify stressors. Next slide, please. And the last step is risk characterization and interpretation, and this includes population and individual risk, as well as risk to subpopulations, and can be utilized to inform decision-making. And so this theoretical framework would, we think we could use it to consider cumulative community-level assessments, which could be required, for example, in lieu of the EJ snapshot report if an entity is developing a new project, and the state-level information in this framework offers guidance to state agencies that wish to identify statewide regions or communities that should be especially protected from cumulative impacts. Next slide, please. And so we also found the EJ screening method, which was developed in California, which is an assessment that looks at 23 different measures and indicators across three different categories, which are hazard proximity and land use, air pollution exposure and health risks, and social and health vulnerabilities. And so this assessment is made up of four steps that are designed to rank and score different census tract based on these different indicators, which then represent cumulative impacts. And so this assessment approach was developed with input from interested parties to help identify indicators, metrics, and scoring approaches, and is used to identify areas that should require additional policy protections to address environmental justice concerns. And so next slide, please. And so this is kind of the final output of this assessment approach, which shows the scoring system with areas in red representing those that have the highest cumulative impacts. And so these regions would then require additional protections when permitting new facilities utilizing this assessment approach. Next slide, please.
And now we'll look at some examples of state policy. Next slide, please. A recent law in New Jersey was passed that includes consideration for cumulative impacts on overburdened communities as census blocks. Notably, permits are mandatorily denied if the project will adversely affect an overburdened community, excuse me. Adversely impact is defined in the laws, quote-unquote, "higher than those borne by other communities within the state, county, or other geographic unit of analysis." In Colorado, there's a law that defines and protects disproportionately impacted communities, or DICs, with a focus on air quality. This law notably creates an EJ task force, treats greenhouse gas emissions as a pollutant, among other things. Next slide, please. The California Environmental Quality Act guidelines defines cumulatively considerable impacts similar to traditional cumulative impacts definitions. When impacts meet this definition of cumulatively considerable, an environmental impact report is required. The report must include strategies to mitigate or avoid impacts, but only for the specific project's contribution. Next slide, please. In New York, there's a bill that has recently passed the State Senate and Assembly that considers cumulative impacts on overburdened communities in the permitting process. If signed into law, New York would be the second state to consider cumulative impacts after New Jersey. The North Carolina Solid Waste Management Act 2007 provides protections for natural resources. In addition, if a future landfill will impact communities of color and of low socioeconomic status, the permit will be denied. Something to note is that the Division of Waste Management has granted permits for the expansion of existing landfills, even with sufficient evidence of disproportionate and cumulative impacts on surrounding communities. There's no legal loophole, but these actions arguably violate Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Next slide, please. The Cumulative Impacts Ordinance in Newark, New Jersey, excuse me, examines a combination of multiple projects, sources of pollution, as well as social vulnerabilities. While this ordinance was passed in 2016, the policy was initially proposed in 2001 by the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance. It took years of advocacy and community organizing alongside with various meetings, reports, et cetera, to refine and ultimately push the ordinance through. This is the first ordinance of its kind to be passed in the U.S., and many cities have followed suit, including Chicago. The ordinance requires potential projects to complete an EJ checklist, which includes considerations for air pollution, hazardous material, amongst others. Something to note is that the right to say no was not included in the final ordinance. This right would have allowed communities to vote via direct referendum to deny activities of new polluting industries. Next slide, please. Some of our quote-unquote "big-picture limitations" include an overall lack of data, frameworks, population-specific, and place-based variables. There are also limitations of current regulations, especially since many regulations oversimplify cumulative impacts, such as considering only one stressor at a time. Next slide, please. Across states, environmental justice policies have been implemented through a variety of policymaking processes. NCDQ should incorporate stronger considerations for cumulative impacts in the permitting process and include a broader inclusion for chemical and nonchemical stressors, socioeconomic, climate change, and psychosocial factors. Additionally, North Carolina tools could be further enhanced by considering a larger variety of indicators. Finally, current North Carolina policy is considerations for Title VI, but doesn't explicitly offer protections for communities experiencing multiple stressors. Next slide, please.
So these are just our final considerations to also consider North Carolina's indigenous populations and permitting new facilities and considering cumulative impacts. Additionally, we did want to highlight that the burden of proof is currently placed on communities to show how they are impacted by various sources of pollution. And we found that the board has demonstrated interest and commitment to cumulative impacts based on previous trips to North Hampton and Robeson Counties. And then finally, the cumulative impact assessment should involve the local community and should also incorporate qualitative data from residents. And this was done with the Anderson Community Group as one example. So we just want to thank y'all again for your time for letting us present. And I don't know if we're opening the floor now for questions or later.
Thank you, ladies. We will open the floor for questions at the end of the presentation, so I'll ask the board members to make note of any questions that they have, and we can circle back. I also want to clarify for everyone that the staff had already put presentations together prior to the meeting, so we will stick with the order on the original agenda rather than the order that I just mentioned. So our next presenter will be Deja Williams.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I will wait for my slides to come up. But as, yeah, so as we're waiting, my presentation will be focusing on the beginnings of Clean Air's work. So I am with Clean Air NC, and I'm the Environmental Justice Manager for our organization. And I'm just going to be focusing on the beginnings of our collaborative air monitoring, citizen science work within environmental justice communities, specifically in the historic West End here in Charlotte, and why we started that, and what we found in terms of better understanding exposure, social determinants of health, and impacts from air pollution. Next slide. So just to give a brief overview of who we are at Clean Air NC and the work we do, we are a nonprofit, and we advocate for the health of all North Carolinians through pursuing equitable and collaborative solutions that address climate change and air pollution through our various programs here. So our environmental justice program utilizes our organizational privilege, resources, and solid platform to meaningfully support and collaborate with communities that are on the front line and to advocate for solutions. Our health program brings these issues to healthcare workers and physicians directly to encourage and promote understanding of health impacts from air pollution. We have a policy program that advocates for policies of sound air pollution. And finally, our citizen science program, which I will be focusing on a lot today, utilizes education and air monitor deployment to build data around polluting sources, increase community-led monitoring, and translate research into action. Next slide. And we do all of this because air pollution represents an extreme environmental health risk that can impact you at all stages of your life. Both short- and long-term exposure to air pollutants can not only cause health problems, but also exacerbate pre-existing conditions. So as you can see here from this graph, it contains the five leading causes of death in North Carolina as of 2020, and four out of five of those causes have the potential to be exacerbated by air pollution due to respiratory stress, which can increase the vulnerability of severity and severity of these illnesses. And not only that, but excluding accidents, Black, Indigenous, and other communities of color are also more likely to individually suffer or die from these causes of death nationally. The most recent example of this being COVID-19, there have been numerous studies produced now that have illustrated that those who are exposed to air pollution over the long term are more likely to die or contract COVID-19. And when we factor in that Indigenous Americans, Latinos, and Black populations have had significantly higher COVID mortality rates, and are also more likely to be located near sources of air pollution, the connection becomes pretty clear, and in that way, air pollution by nature is a cumulative impact. However, even though there's growing evidence that characterizes exposure inequities, knowledge gaps definitely still exist in terms of localized monitoring data. Also, most air pollution is invisible, so it can be hard to illustrate the importance. Next slide. So, and just wanting to understand data around air pollution, fill in localized monitoring gaps, and to bring communities to these efforts, we decided to launch our Airkeepers Program in 2017, which began in the historic West End neighborhood here in Charlotte. So through utilizing two different types of sensors, I have here the AirBeam on the top right and the Purple Air on the bottom, community members measured localized concentration of PM 2.5, which most you probably know is a form of particulate matter. It's one of our six criteria pollutants because of its potential to cause serious health harms. So when monitoring began, like I said, air pollution is hard to visualize. So with the purple air and the dating, and the continuous data tracking, it allowed live readings to be available on their website. So community members were able to reference and keep track of data that was cut, that was data from PM 2.5 that was around their media area. And when this program was started, residents in the historic West End really demonstrated the importance of monitoring pollution and in turn, understanding the activities around them, which may contribute to pollution. So just as an example, the residents were able to document PM 2.5 spikes produced by street paving, mountain wildfires, and increased truck traffic linked to a major construction project on I-77. However, as community awareness around air pollution and the sources through monitoring increased through this project, naturally, opportunities to advocate for clean air became a priority. But that required, of course, addressing the challenges in policy permitting and systemic inequalities, which have driven communities like the historic West End to the threshold of environmental stressors. Next slide. So these are some of the challenges in the community, so just starting with historical place-based exclusion. Like many cities in the United States, Charlotte's historic West End suffered from a history of redlining that kept businesses and loans out of this area for decades, while making neighborhoods in the historic West End target for highway corridor construction. Speaking of industrial pollution, so if you see the Charlotte's 1935 redlining disinvestment map on the far left, it shows areas in red and yellow where financial institutions did not make home loans. This caused a geographical segregation in Charlotte, which is a relationship locally referred to as the crescent and the wedge. The wedge is made up of affluent neighborhoods stretching from the south of Charlotte, and then this is surrounded by a crescent of formerly redlined neighborhoods, which have high rates of poverty and are predominantly blacked. So this pattern is definitely more clear in the public health map in the middle from 2012 to 2016. As you can see, the historic West End also suffers from health disparities, rates of unemployment, and access to fresh and healthy food, which are all social determinants of health and have the potential to affect a wide array of health outcomes. And in terms of air pollution, these factors can exacerbate how individuals in the historic West End are impacted. Next slide. And just briefly, I just wanted to show, as you can see, that when it comes to actual sources of pollution, the exposure potential is great in the historic West End. So this is a map that I pulled from EPA EJ screen. If you're familiar, I just singled out air pollution and toxic releases of EPA-regulated sites, and I put that on top of communities of color, which is primarily the historic West End. And as you can see, where the communities of color are primarily located in Charlotte, which is the historic West End, is also where polluting industries are located. And there are also multiple highway systems that cross through the community. Next slide. So just taking all this information into account, in conjunction with community monitoring, historic West End residents, and collaboration with our organization, developed a report called Clearing the Air to Summarize Monitoring Data and Connect Existing Disparities When It Comes to Air Pollution Impacts. Excuse me, like I had mentioned, we found spikes, which community members were able to directly relate to certain things that were going on in their communities, such as trash burning or local highway infrastructure projects. So we found those spikes, and we also found outliers and monitors in the historic West End that produced higher-than-average levels of pollutions for very short periods. So not for the long term, but for very short periods. But overall, our results also indicated the importance of unpacking indicators of social stratification to better understand how and why inequalities emerge and how those inequalities exacerbate health outcomes in the historic West End. So community members brought this report forward to Mecklenburg County Board of Commissioners, and were able to advocate for a federal air monitor, which is now located at a church within the community. Next slide. So to build upon monitoring efforts, we are now continuing to collaborate towards the shared goal of a historic West End Green District designed to protect air quality, improve health, and stimulate economic growth through the use of innovation and technology that contributes towards clean air initiatives. So there are many projects and initiatives, and they're chosen by historic West End Green District leadership. I have some of those listed here, but for the sake of time, I won't touch upon them each individually. Just the, the point here is, you know, increasing tree canopy, increasing access to EV infrastructure, increasing education around sustainable strategies to protect health from air pollution. So we will have trainings that are community-led and county-led, so that the county and community can connect with the issues that are most important to them and be able to address that at the local level. So not just taking air pollution into account in the monitoring, but also how it can broaden to these wider things that are touched on by cumulative impacts, such as economic deprivation, lack of access to green infrastructure. These are, these are many of the things that are impacted by cumulative impacts. And so taking this holistic approach and this community-led initiative, hopefully, you know, we'll start to see, see some sustainable outcomes. Next slide. So just in closing, I wanted to highlight some considerations that's relevant as a state moves forward to address cumulative impacts, particularly in, in light of some of the things that we have found in, in doing some of this work. So just for starters, we have experienced our work in the historic West End, which we hope to expand exponentially, that citizen or community science can serve as a nexus for progressing and advancing environmental justice, at least at the local level. Community members were able to summarize real-world phenomena and standardize forms of measurements and directly tie that to policy action, an action that made sense for them and their community. And while measuring pollution alone, of course, it doesn't resolve inequities, but the data has, has supported the historic West End on further actions to confront air pollution. And I really think the DEQ and other state agencies can really learn from these efforts and other efforts which allow communities to access and participate in open-source data. The second point I wanted to highlight is the importance of not only addressing environmental indicators for cumulative impacts, but also economic, health, and demographic indicators. Again, the same policies that have resulted in systemic disinvestment, systemic pollution, and communities of color have also allowed polluting industries to move in and have also resulted in poor housing stock. Um, have also allowed polluting industries to move in and have also re- resulted in poor housing stock, poor access to healthy food, less green space, less economic opportunity. All the things that the historic West End is, is dealing with, but also communities across our state, other environmental justice communities across our state are also dealing with. So um, yeah, just the combination of all these socioeconomic stressors um, and the health effects that are compounding with those stressors um, are rarely addressed in policies to limit pollution, um, which kind of leads me to my third point. Um, which they just talked to, touched upon in the last uh, presentation, but is the burden of proof. Um, I've highlighted the many benefits of community science, citizen science. Um, however, it should not fall on the shoulders of impacted communities to prove that their air environment is polluted. Um, or that they are being disproportionately impacted um, by this. So the use of a cumulative impact screening or map or tool developed by the state that all agencies can reference have the potential to remove this burden um, from communities. Um, and I know I'm going over time, so I'll just touch on my last one. Um, just tying in everything, I just wanted to highlight the importance of respecting and considering the significance um, of community place, uh, history and collective lived experiences. Just considering how complex and comprehensive cumulative impacts can be, the need for place-based, community-engaged approaches to address this issue is going to require that our regulatory choices reflect the priorities and perspectives of impacted communities. Cause if those voices are not heard, then we are going to continue to structurally fail um, in addressing this. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Deja. Um, our third presenter is Dr. Sakobi Wilson, who has been very instrumental in putting together the tool in the state of Maryland. Dr. Wilson?
So I'm gonna do quickly is kind of give an overview of the tool in Maryland and, and some of my comments about other, other tools that are out there. And then just in general, uh, what's happening uh, in the tool, tool world. Uh, but uh, as, as was just stated, I'm Dr. Jacoby Wilson. I've helped to build the Maryland EJ Screen Tool. It's one of the state-level tools that are out there right now. And so, uh, next slide please. So when you think about, you know, these tools, um, our tool builds off of US EPA EJ Screen, uh, which is the first kind of federal level, the national level tool. Uh, the second national level tool is the Council Environmental Qualities, uh, Justice Forty uh, mapping tool, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. And then also we leverage the uh, tool that was built in California. The oldest state-level tool is the Calen Viro Screen. I think they're now at version four point O. Uh, so the whole idea behind this tool is, is be able to, you know, get local data, uh, co- customize the local concerns. And, and really use these tools as just stated by our previous speaker for, for state policymaking. So these are all what we like to call environmental justice screen and mapping tools, EJSM tools. But they're also tools that they should, should be used as part of decision support system. So whether it be uh, for investing of dollars, uh, whether it be for targeting uh, policy change. Whether it be for additional uh, enhanced inspections, enhanced compliance, enhanced enforcement. Whether it be dealing with permitting, both for new permits and cumulative impacts. And also, very importantly, dealing with legacy pollution sites. Cause a lot of the cumulative impacts of, of language that's out there is dealing with new permits. They're not really talking about dealing with legacy uh, facilities. So that's one of the gaps. Uh, next slide please. So when we think about it's one of the previous speakers talked about, we are using what I like to call the cumulative impact scoring approach. So that, so some of the tools, when, when we try to score and kind of combine indicators, you may have more of a matrix approach. Where you have a list of indicators, for example, you could have hazard indicators, proximity to super fun sites, proximity to brownfields, proximity to uh, leaking underground storage tanks. And you have a threshold that you have to cross for that, for the, for that box to be checked, checked on that uh, particular uh, indicator. That's a matrix approach. You, a double basis approach is where you have a first set of indicators. Again, you can have hazard indicators, you can have health indicators, you got how climate indicators. And you check the box across the threshold. Then you have a secondary indicator like income. Okay? So maybe it's above two hundred percent the federal poverty level. That's what we call a double matrix approach. This approach is not that. This is a cumulative impact score approach where we basically have domains. And what we do is we uh, average the uh, environmental exposures indicators with the environmental uh, uh, effects indicators. Uh, and then we multiply that uh, by the uh, census populations indicators averaged with the uh, social demographic indicators. So this is approach that, that originated with Calen viral screen. We use this approach. There's several other tools that also use this approach. What also uh, difference between many of the tools? It depends on the unit analysis. Uh, as was mentioned, New Jersey's uh, kind of uh, cumulative impact tool looks at blocks. Many of the uh, 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 block groups, many of the mapping tools, Cali viral screen and Maryland's tool. We use census track as our primary unit of analysis. There's some other uh, state-level mapping tools that use block groups as that, their unit of analysis. But I like to say that when you're using these mapping tools, it, it's actually pretty important to have multiple units of analysis. And I'll talk about that uh, at the end of my presentation, when I give you more updates on where we are moving from like EJ screen, a merely just ring two point O to three point O, four point O. But next slide please. And so when you think about those four buckets, uh, calm domains, but I like to say buckets, buckets sound better, those four buckets of indicators, we have pollution exposure. And that's again, we're talking about particular matter ozone, uh, NADA data, like NADA cancer risk, uh, NADA respiratory risk, national scale air toxic assessment, that's NADA. Uh, maybe other types of exposure data. Uh, and that data i- is fraught with limitations as the previous speaker just mentioned. I would say that most of our air quality data is actually not that robust and is actually not spatially representative, is not hyper-local. And in many ways, it's a form of exposure misclassification. Cause you may have a monitor twenty miles down the road and you're saying, hey, we're building a new factory, getting a permit at my house, right where I am right now. That reading is not actually spatially uh, relevant to where it's, what happened at my house. So in, in verbal health, we call it exposure misclassification. That's actually bad data. That's my point. That's bad data. The other category uh, could be, you know, proximity to hazards. So various types of hazards are already stated. Those are the burden indicators. And then census populations could be people with some underlying health issue or children or the elderly. And then we have our classic EJ uh, indicators when we, when we talk about social demographics. So in my opinion, when you're developing any tool to have environmental justice score, you have to have both the disadvantage as represented by social demographic indicators. So either racial ethnic uh, indicator. Um, a linguistic isolation or English proficiency indicator and also income indicators. So that's the, that, that helps to capture disadvantage and also being overburdened. To me, you cannot have an environmental injustice with just overburdened and you cannot have environmental injustice with just disadvantage. You need to have both. Okay? So, so next, next slide please. And so we're thinking about the indicators in our uh, pollution burden um, bucket. Again, here are some of the ones I mentioned before. It is highly problematic that again, a lot of the air quality data is actually not that accurate. One thing when we're gonna do, y'all can cut me off if I run out of time, cause I know I'm not gonna be able to get to all these issues. What we're doing right now in our, our revision of EJ screen, uh, to move it to EJ three, three, three point O, um, as our, we're updating our air quality data. We're actually getting satellite data from NASA. So the NASA satellite data is gonna be, is gonna be more accurate, more granular than the EPA sparse monitoring data. And also as the previous speaker mentioned, we're adding low-cost sensor data. So we're building out statewide low-cost system networks in the state of Maryland. So we'll have a near real-time air quality interface in our tool as of June twenty twenty-two. Okay, so I just wanna add that. Next, next slide please. Now we have environmental effects. So we talk about environmental effects, environmental burden. We think, when you think about classic environmental justice, injustice, the differential burden of hazards. This is where you can put all those various indicators. Now, here's some of the classic indicators that are both in Calen viral screen and also US EPA EJ screen. But in our re- revised version of our tool, one of the biggest problems with these tools is they are very urban-centric. So if you're gonna capture what's happening in rural areas, you have to have indicators that are relevant to rural areas. Like things like um, proximity to leaking underground storage tanks, proximity to hog farms, I'm sorry, proximity to bile gas plants. Proximity to meatpacking facilities, proximity to sludge fields, proximity to lagoons. If you, you, okay? Another big issue was unincorporated communities are many rural communities are unincorporated. So they end up being differentially burdened. You need to have an unincorporated communities indicator. We have that in a revised version of our tool. Okay? And we also have added mining operations. Uh, we also have added a, 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 access to wifi as an infrastructure indicator. So we think about environmental justice, it's just not the hazards, right, or the stressors. It's also your access to infrastructure. So that's helping us capture some of the environmental justice experiences for people in rural communities in the state of Maryland. Uh, next slide please. And so our census of populations category, which is in a current two point O, we are changing that to a health domain. So CDC right now has the CDC places data, where you can get, I think about ten different indicators at the census tract level. So we will be uh, importing that data to map, use that data in our health domain and then do imputation to basically model what we have at the track level down to the block group level. So one thing that we're gonna do with our, with our revised tool, we're actually gonna be able to do the create EJ, uh, calculate EJ scores at the track level, at the block group level. Also at the block level, the legislative district level and the school district level. That's what we're doing right now. No other tool in the country, except if y'all do it yourselves, no other to the country right now has all five of those, of those units of analysis. But that's gonna be my, a revised version that's gonna be launched in, in June of twenty twenty-two, which is basically, um, was that next month? I'm sorry. I think next month, maybe July, but something like that. But we're gonna have more, more folks on health uh, uh, in this category. Next slide please. And then, so we're gonna still have these socio-economic indicators, but one thing that the CEQ tool that I, that mentioned before, it does not include race. Uh, that's highly problematic. You have to have race and, and what we're gonna do in our tool, we're actually bringing in segregation indices. And we're also bringing redlining data. So we're gonna actually uh, improve this particular category. An additional domain that we're adding to our tool, we're also bringing in climate change uh, indicators as well. So we'll have a climate change domain as well. So heat issues, extreme temperature above ninety degrees, above a hundred degrees, uh, tree canopy data, flood data, damage data, uh, social vulnerability index. Uh, uh, CDC's vulnerability index, all that will be part of our uh, climate change uh, domain. Next slide please. And so, so we also have two other tools that we're building so that can work and kind of uh, sync in a unit of each other. We have a park equity mapping tool and a climate equity help tool, so that we'll have a separate climate change tool, but we also have the climate change uh, score, the domain within the EJ screen tool. Next slide please. And so, uh, so we can skip this. We create a score, just like I said, Call of Viral Screen. You go on the next slide please. And so in addition to what I've mentioned already, we're creating these new domains. Uh, we're gonna try to get a cumulative impacts by bringing in also the RESEI data, the RSEI data. Uh, try to get some hazard profile data, uh, just like uh, you may not be familiar with the tool, but um, to say to Texas. The city of Houston has its own tool called ToxPod. And ToxPod actually has some innovations in it included having flooding data and other data. And we're actually leveraging some of what they're doing for our climate change, uh, uh, climate change domain. But ToxPod is another tool, I think that's a really good job of, of getting that cumulative impacts. In, in addition to um, uh, to, to those changes I mentioned before, we're gonna also make sure that we bring in um, the permit data from Ecos. So I think that was mentioned before. Uh, we're also gonna try to get zoning data, which will be very difficult for the whole state because, because I think at the local level zoning is very, very important. But those are the main thing, those are the main things that we're doing to make our tool better. And I think it, it could be a template for what y'all can do in the state of North Carolina. I think I'm, I may be out of time now, so I'll pass the mic back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Um, our next, and we, I'm sure we'll have questions as follow-up. So um, our next presenter is uh, Dr. Crystal Lee Powell Jackson.
Thanks, Sherri. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, everybody. My name is Crystal Lee Powell Jackson. I am a research environmental scientist with RTI International. And I recently started RTI in October of last year. Prior to that, I was an environmental toxicologist for the Department of Health and Human Services. And there I managed the private well and health program and various other environmental problems and programs, sorry. And while at RTI now, I've been working on the Clean Water for US Kids program. And this is a program where we're working with state agencies to address lead and drinking water. So when Sherri reached out to me about this presentation, I was like, sure, I can put on my tox hat and talk to people about why health data matters. And when we're talking about cumulative impact, why should we not only look beyond the permit numbers and the contaminants that are within there, but in incorporating that with health data? And I think Sakobi did a great job um, showing all the different parameters that we can consider. Next slide please. So, you know, I wanted to start out my talk, talking about the importance of environmental impacts to health. People are exposed to risk factors in their home, workplace and communities. And in, in fact, um, the World Health Organization estimates that twenty-four percent of deaths around the globe are due to environmental hazards, environmental exposures. And then among children under five, twenty-eight percent of those deaths are caused by environmental exposures. And so these are things that are preventable, that we can do things about and take actions to prevent. And so this infographic, I think is great. It shows a lot of the points and where pollution is occurring and where, where people are being impacted. Air pollution, as we heard from Deja earlier, um, thinking about chemical and radiation, noise, occupational hazards. All of these things are where people can be exposed and how people can be exposed. And then, you know, we're not, we don't live in a bubble. And so all of these things are compounding with each other. And people are being exposed to mixtures of toxicants and agents. Next slide please. And this is ultimately how people are then impacted through their um, through their health. This graph is just an example of how, you know, people are exposed to mixtures. So this is a graph from a two thousand eleven study that analyzed the detection of environmental contaminants in pregnant and non-pregnant women. This study analyzed data from two thousand three to two thousand four from the National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey known as NHANES. And NHANES is a program that assesses the health and nutritional status of adults and children in the US. And researchers combine interviews and physical examinations to get a snapshot of what our nation looks like um, when they're conducting these studies. And so recent decade, um, in recent decades, researchers have investigated, you know, how, how are we being exposed and to what? And so this graph shows the number of chemicals detected in a cohort of pregnant women. They looked at fifty-four um, pregnant women among non-pregnant women. And this is just a snapshot of one of those cohorts. And so the graph, they looked at um, cotinine, which is a indicator of um, exposure to tobacco smoke. They looked at metals, they looked at organ- organochlorine pesticides. They looked at PBDEs, which are flame retardants. They looked at PHs, which are from incomplete combustion. And they looked at phthalates. These are chemicals that are um, used in plasticizers and have been detected in personal care products. And so the graph here shows the number of chemicals, of the fifty-two chemicals that they looked at, the number being detected in an individual pregnant woman. And so raging from about twenty-eight to forty-five, these women had varying numbers of contaminants, but not just one. A mixture. And so this is just an indication of how we, you know, how we as humans are being exposed. And, you know, recent years, there's been a lot of research to unravel how these mixtures are interacting and how they ultimately impact health. Next slide. And so then tying it back to the issue at hand disproportionate burden. We know that um, studies have shown that communities living below the poverty line or non-white communities have a higher burden of exposure to particulate matter. Studies have shown that people living below the poverty line and those who are non-white or people of color in those communities, they're more likely to live in fence-line zones. So within a few miles of a source of contamination. Uh, additional studies have looked at that higher rates of incidence among chemical facilities. are more likely to occur within communities of color compared to those facilities within predominantly white neighborhoods. Um, CDC has found and documented that African Americans in low income households are disproportionately affected by lead poisoning. And then extreme weather conditions can have devastating impacts on low income communities. Minorities are more likely to live in these areas due to historical redlining. And those areas are more likely to be, have increased temperatures and increased sea level rising. Next slide. And so when we, you know, talk about all of these mixtures and, you know, putting on my tox hat. I wanted to kind of introduce the basic context, concepts of what I learned when I was in toxicology. When I was in grad school for toxicology. And so that is the dose makes the poison. Meaning that the depending on the amount that you're exposed to and for, for how long, it will determine whether there's an adverse effect. And so, you know, to conceptualize that, I've put this formula here where you have no, no harm. And then given time of exposure and absorption of a toxicant within your body over a certain amount of time, you get an adverse effect or an impact to health. And this can vary from acute toxicity, like say for example carbon monoxide to chronic exposure to arsenic in your drinking water. And then anywhere in between as far as amount and severity and, um, the, the dose. And so this is a simple process, right? No, next slide please. So here are all of the factors that can modulate that pathway from no harm to, and I, I say all, this is not all, this is just a few of the different factors that can modulate. Going from exposure to a toxicant and then an adverse impact. And so we're, you know, things like duration of exposure. Are you inhaling it? Are you drinking it? Um, is it being ingested, things like that, but also genetics, age, gender. Those things can modulate that pathway as well as, as they're finding out can also directly impact a pathway. And another one that I do want to highlight is the pre-existing conditions. So people who are dealing with asthma or dealing with other, um, heart impact, um, chronic heart disease or dealing with other adverse effects, those can also modulate and make people more susceptible to toxicity. Next slide please. So for example, into, in a two thousand ten review of the role that work plays on health. Researchers published this graph and this is a graph of the incidence of five chronic diseases. They looked at hypertension, heart disease, diabetes, asthma and COPD. And they looked at the population of male employees from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand three. And they found that prevalence of the disease among the workers varied when you looked at the hourly grade of the employees. And so hourly zero to fifteen, grade zero to fifteen was considered like the blue collar jobs, working within the factory. Versus the salary sixteen and up, the, the white collar positions, working in, in the offices. And so what they found that there was a higher prevalence of disease among the blue collar workers. For some of the diseases, um, among the blue collared workers compared to the white collar workers. And they also suggested that the physical didn't demand of the job. And there was ambient noise levels were higher within the area where the blue collared employees were working. And so that's just an example of how disease and other factors beyond environmental exposures can modulate outputs among communities. And we know that a lot of these diseases are highly prevalent within minority, minority communities. Next slide. So as I mentioned, there's been decades of work going towards looking at the impacts of mixtures. And then additionally, how might other factors impact, impact the then toxic output? And the adverse out, outcome of the individual. And so it's important to consider health data when we're thinking about exposure to environmental toxicants and how those might impact communities. Not only to further characterize the impacts of, um, toxins on adverse health. But also to under, understand how pre-existing conditions can also impact the health of communities. So having that data, bolstering that data and then incorporating it within this framework and other frameworks is, is important. Next slide. And so there are places that we can look to get health data. Um, Places is a CDC, uh, I'm sorry if you guys hear my dogs barking. Um, Places is a CDC partnership with the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And what they have are county level census tract and zip code tract level estimates of, um, of different disease outcomes, chronic disease, they, I believe it's tw- twenty-nine different diseases that they're looking at. And this is actually, um, where EJ Screen gets a lot of their data. The other, um, location to look is the Environmental Public Health Tracking Network through CDC. And this, and what they're doing there is they're collecting data from funded state cooperative agreements to bolster environmental tracking and make that data accessible to the public. And, and I wanted to definitely plug the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The group that I worked with prior to leaving, um, DHHS. They were working on applying for the, the next, um, iteration of the Environmental Public Health Tracking Portal. And they're, they've been doing a lot of great stuff. Um, and this is a screenshot of a draft data map that they're working on. And it's looking at climate indicators of health. But, you know, they're working on, on this portal they've applied. And I encourage, you know, the board to reach out to, um, Kim Gates. She's the one leading this work to find out more about what DHHS is doing. Because I think it's very important to incorporate public health and incorporate the public health agency involved in it. And collecting it and trying to make it accessible. So, um, the last, next slide will be kind of the last message that I wanna present. Um, so, and I think, uh, Sakobi mentioned it, um, when he was talking. But it's important to have high resolution data. And so what I have here is data from CDC Places, um, looking at coronary heart disease. And these are again estimates, uh, um, modeling data. And so the top right shows the county level estimates of a community of North Carolina of chronic disease. And, and what I want you to see here is, and I wish I had a pointer. But if you look like in the Raleigh Durham area, you see this pale area, um, within the map. And these are county estimates. And so what happens in county estimates is you get kind of the extremes. You lose the pockets. And I think with cumulative impact and disproportionate burden to communities, it, it, you need to be able to not look at the diluted estimates within a community, within a county. You need to look at that actual community and, and get down into the resolution, into the, the census tract levels and block groups level of data and making sure that data is accessible. And, and bolstering, um, the state's ability to measure and report on these things. And so next slide, we'll zoom in a little bit in, and I, I should have picked a different part of the state. But I was like, it looks so pale and it shouldn't, because there's pockets in there. And so this is zoomed in of the Raleigh Durham area. And you'll see again, you know, while the, the accesses are different, slightly different with the max being nine point four with the county level data and, and the men being, uh, six point two versus, is that six? Yes. Versus the coronary heart disease for the, the census tract level data has the, um, the range is eight to four point one. But what I want you to see are the little, the little pockets, the little red dots within like right by Raleigh. You can see that it's not pale. It's not, you know, there isn't an issue. There are issues within there that you see when you start to go down to those finer resolution data. And so, next slide, just is my thank you for, you know, giving me the opportunity to present. And, um, I guess next presenter.
Thanks, Crystal. And our final presenter is Jasmine Washington. Jasmine, I'll turn it over to you and then, um, once she finishes, we'll open up for questions from the board.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jasmine Washington. And I'm an associate attorney at the Southern Environmental Law Center in Chapel Hill. Um, I want to first thank EJ EAB for the opportunity to speak with y'all tonight. Um, I will be presenting some of my research into DEQ's legal authority and obligation to consider cumulative impacts in their permitting decision. Um, I will mostly be speaking about Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Um, I'll first discuss why Title VI applies to DEQ in their permitting decisions. And then talk about what Title VI says about cumulative impact and how it applies. Next slide please. Um, so first let's take a look at the text of Title VI. Um, one click please. So I've shared on the screen the text of Title VI. It's a lot of words, um, but I'm gonna read it aloud now, um, and we'll revisit it throughout my presentation. Um, but Title VI of the, uh, Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four reads that no person in the United States shall, on the grounds of race, color, national, or national origin, be excluded from participation and be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. Under the statute, each federal agency, including EPA, is required to create regulations that tell the agency how to carry out the Title VI statute. Um, one click please. So I've now shared the text of EPA's implementing regulations, um, which I will now read aloud and which we will revisit throughout my presentation. It reads in part that a recipient shall not use criteria or methods of administering its program or activity, which have the effect of subjecting individuals to discrimination because of their race, color, national origin or sex. Or have the effect of defeating or substantially impairing accomplishments of the objectives of the program or activity with respect individuals of a particular race, color or national origin. So what does all this mean? Um, so Title VI and EPA's implementing regulations mandate that if any organization, which includes state agencies, receives money or property from the federal government, then that organization cannot carry out any of its activities in a way that discriminates against communities of color. Um, next slide please. Um, so now let's look at why this applies to DEQ. Uh, so I've got the, the text of Title VI on the screen again. And you'll notice that I've underlined the words federal financial assistance in the statute and recipient in the regulation. So as I just mentioned, Title VI applies to any organization, including state agencies that receive funding or financial assistance from EPA. Um, in fact, before any organization receives a financial assistance from EPA, they're required to put forth assurances that their programs will comply with Title VI. And notably, federal guidance makes very clear that if an organization receives federal funding for any of its programs, then Title VI applies across all of their programs and activities. Um, so since DEQ receives funding, um, PA for some of its programs or activities, um, they are required to comply with Title VI across all of their programming and activities. Next slide please. Um, so next, let's talk about why Title VI applies to DEQ's permitting decisions. Um, so once again, going back to the text of the law, I've underlined the words in both the statute and regulation, um, any program or activity. Um, simply put, permitting programs are programs. Next slide please. Um, EPA has published guidance that makes it exceedingly clear that Title VI applies to any recipient's permitting decisions. Um, specifically EPA's two thousand seventeen, uh, uh, Title VI Compliance Toolkit states that permitting decisions taken by state agencies funded by EPA are subject to federal civil rights law, which is Title VI. Um, we also have cases in which EPA's Civil Rights Compliance Office has made preliminary and final findings in Title VI complaints that were based on a state agency's permitting decision. And in fact, the only case in which EPA made a final finding of discrimination and was based on the issuance of air permits to a power plant by, um, Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Um, so the statutory and regulatory language, as well as EPA's guidance and past actions, um, make it very clear that Title VI applies to state agencies' decision-making. Um, for us, that means that DEQ is bound by Title VI and their permitting program. Next slide please. Okay, so now let's talk about why or what Title VI tells us about cumulative impacts. Um, so returning for the last time, I promise, um, to the text of the law. Um, I've underlined the words, um, subjected to discrimination in the statute and the effect of subjecting individuals to discrimination in the regulation. Um, courts and EPA have interpreted these terms to provide broad authority when considering harms under Title VI. Um, next slide please. And one more click. Um, okay, so under Title VI, there are different types of discrimination, um, one of which is intentional discrimination. Um, so in that form of discrimination, a state agency, um, would take an action with the express purpose um, of excluding or burdening a community of color. Um, so in those cases, courts will look at the totality of circumstances and really be looking for that smoking gun that shows that the agency acted specifically in order to harm people of color. Um, so they're looking for that intention. Um, one click please. Um, so, but, but what's most relevant us here is the second type of discrimination known as disparate impact. So in disparate impact discrimination, intent does not matter. Um, instead, a state agency's activity violates Title VI if the end result is a disproportionate harm to people or communities of color. Um, so whether the state agency intended that result is not, is important. It doesn't matter. And what matters is the harm that results from the state agency's activity and their failure to mitigate that harm. Um, so I've been using the word harm a bit and that's because harm is where cumulative impacts really come into play under Title VI. Um, and it's because when EPA investigates claims of disparate impacts, they will look at a broad range of harms that have been caused by the agency's activities. Um, in other words, EPA will look at the cumulative harms and impact. Um, next slide please. One more click. Um, so, so these are just some of impacts that EPA will consider. Um, they will consider environmental harms, so things like the local air quality and water quality. Um, EPA will consider the adverse health effects. Um, so the local rates of asthma, um, cardiac disease, cancer and mental health. Um, and EPA will also consider the non-health impacts, um, such as the economic harms like depreciated property values, um, odor, noise, uh, traffic, um, and impacts to social gatherings and recreation. If these are the harms that EPA considers in investigating Title VI complaints of disparate impact in state agency permitting, then DEQ must consider these factors in their permitting programs. Next slide please. Um, notably and very importantly, um, Title VI has its own legal obligations that are separate and distinct from compliance with environmental law. Um, in other words, compliance with state and federal environmental laws does not excuse or exempt a state agency from their obligation to comply with Title VI. Um, to further support the obligations of DEQ and state agencies, um, obligations to consider cumulative impacts. And we also have draft EPA guidance from two thousand, um, which is often still cited by EPA, which walks through how state agencies should consider cumulative impacts. And we also have a two thousand seventeen report from the Office of Inspector General and that recognizes that state agencies have the obligation to consider cumulative impacts under Title VI. Um, and we also have a case brought in federal district court in two thousand three that found that state, a state agency had to consider the cumulative harms to the community in issuing environmental permits. uh to the community in issuing environmental permits. So between EPA's regulations, EPA's guidance, and their past enforcement, and federal case law, it's clear that DEQ has an obligation um to consider cumulative impacts in their permitting decisions under Title VI. Next slide, please. Um DEQ has also recognized their own authority to address disparate impacts under Title VI and consider cumulative impacts. Can I get two clicks? And there we go. Um so on the screen, I have a screenshot of DEQ's two thousand one environmental equity policy, um wherein uh you see circled there um is DEQ's vow to address environmental equity issues in permitting decisions for projects potentially having a disparate impact on communities protected by Title VI. Um and they vow to develop guidelines for assessing the cumulative effects of permitted facilities. Um this policy has not been revoked. Um and it demonstrates that DEQ recognizes its authority to consider cumulative impacts in their permitting decisions. Um next slide, please. Um so I've listed here um some of the legal authorities that establish or support DEQ's obligation to consider cumulative impacts uh in their permitting decisions. Um they include EPA and DOJ regulations and guidance, um EPA findings, and federal case law. Next slide. Um so to wrap up here, um I have three takeaways um for the board. Uh one click, please. Um so first, that DEQ is bound by Title VI and their permitting programs. Um this is made very clear by EPA regulation, DOJ regulation, um and EPA's uh compliance toolkit. One click, please. Um Title VI uh also has its own legal obligations that are separate and distinct from obligations um under state and federal environmental law. Um this once again is made very clear by EPA's regulations and guidance. One more click. Um and lastly, that Title VI requires DEQ to consider and mitigate cumulative impacts in their permitting decision. Um this once again is made clear by EPA's regulations, guidance, and previous actions. Uh one click, please, or next slide. Um so in conclusion, we request that EJ EAB advise DEQ that they are required to consider cumulative impacts of permitting decisions on communities of color in order to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Um thank you again for the opportunity to present this evening, and I'm open for questions when the time comes.
Thank you, Jasmine, and thanks to all of the panel. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Carolina, to open up for questions.
Thank you. Um it was great hearing from everybody. So we'll go ahead and have a discussion. I just want to remind folks that we do have public comment beginning at seven thirty. So um uh Ms. Sheri Wood Williamson, I invite you to lead the discussion, and if folks need me, I'll pop in as needed. But um I'd really like to hear from from the members at this time.
Okay, I believe I see Carlos with his hand raised.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank all four of you for the work that you put into this um uh all four of your uh programs. Uh and I also feel that if we put a little more education, not only amongst ourselves and those around us, uh as much as a little bit as much as you did, and um have the enthusiasm and animation of Mr. Wilson, I think we could uh conquer a lot of uh problems that we are facing. But um in in one of in one of the first programs or the second, uh you noted factors that were uh involved in um working with the different communities. And one of the factors that I I feel should have been mentioned because it it affects us very much, and I've been following it for the last twenty years here in North Carolina, is uh political. Our legislature and our senate uh have been gerrymandering different communities, and they had not been taking the considerations that Title VI puts in as far as where the lines are moved. This one point two million uh billion dollars that we're getting, from what I have seen, they've been more economic moves as as far as uh politics having to do with it, not Title VI. And um the uh the the I was curious, who decides uh and I've I've seen different numbers that we've worked with on the uh uh the DEQ on the the amount of people there, and who decides, you know, what the race and the number of races are there that we can work with. And again, is this all information that we work with just for ourselves? Or is this something that um our politicians have when they make these uh big decisions? Um that that's what I wanted to ask was that if uh why um politics isn't uh mentioned in there as far as who decides and what decides these uh things? And I would like to in in insert something. I heard from a a politician at one time where he said that um hope is not a strategy. And it's very interesting to hear that because many times we feel that uh that will carry us through. But I think you've shown me tonight that education is a strategy and one that we should follow very closely. Um thank you very much. I don't know who would want to answer um a loaded question about gerrymandering in our politics, but I would like to put that out to anyone who feels they have um some kind of answer or um for us to rebound to it. Thank you.
Would either of the panelists like to answer that question?
It's quiet.
I don't I don't think I understand the question honestly to answer it.
Okay, the the question is basically um on one of the programs, they were talking about factors that uh you use uh in order to um give certain percentages to different communities as far as monies that come in uh from the federal. And uh amongst them, of course, were color, uh climate change, and so forth. But one of the things that was not mentioned is one of them that changes it everything uh completely uh is gerrymandering, which is a political thing, which comes through the senate and the house. And these have a very large effect on the changing of the borders of our communities. And they have nothing to do with the Title VI that was brought in by um by yourself. But I was just wondering if this was something that uh is even thought of? Or um do you know, it it's just like, you decide where the borders are in twenty twenty, okay? Well, between them, in the next two years, the legislature is going to change by gerrymandering all these borders. But they're not doing it according to Title VI. That's probably one of the last things they even think of is when they do it.
Yeah, I I can charm in real quick. So I I mentioned that and I think in mapping tools, you want to be able to show, so using these mapping tools, and 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 you don't really, I mean, in some ways, that you don't want the tools to stop you from actually having action. But the tools should be used to identify, prioritize, and micro-target communities with the most need. Now, the districts may change because of gerrymandering, right? But you also have you have multiple units of analysis. So you can look at tracks. Zip codes are not stable. You're saying because of gerrymandering, the legislative districts are not stable, but the census tracts should be stable. So that the advocates should be asking for the monies to be disbursed to areas that are ranked as a high priority communities based on the scores that they receive through these mapping tools. So you may have to do some comparison between what the score is at the track level and what the score is at the legislative district level. If the districts are changing, you may that may not be a relevant one to to look to because it's not stable. So you want to use a stable unit of analysis to make sure you get into the communities with the most need, right? So and another way to to do that is, is to bring in some other types of data which actually uh reflect uh issues of segregation, issues of redlining. There's been a lot of work done out in Michigan, a lot of work done uh out of Richmond, New York City, Richmond, uh looking at redlining data. So I think there's some ways to work around that, but but also, just for example, I'll pass the mic back. I I just found out some really great news in our state. We uh were able to pass a, we're trying to pass a Justice Forty-related bill in the state of Maryland. So I'm not sure how much I talked about Justice Forty, but it's related to executive order forty-six zero eight. As we move from dirty age economy to clean age economy, forty percent of those benefits should go to disadvantaged communities. We're using some of these same indicators that we're talking about today. And our bill did not pass, but we actually got the language about being overburdened and disadvantaged into the state budget. Okay, so that's another place to go. If you don't get it in the bill, get it in the budget. I can't believe we got in the budget. And it and it actually says, I'm gonna pass the mic, I'm talking way too much. It says, hey, Maryland Department of Environment, this would be like if I was at UNC Chapel Hill, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, you have to work with Dr. Wilson's lab. That's actually in the budget. They have to work with my team to make sure they're doing it right, our state our state Environmental Protection Agency. So that's another way just to stop talking so much to that we can get this done to. Bill doesn't work, get in the budget. But I do agree about your point, that the districts change, you gotta find a stable unit of analysis that you use that that's stable over time. If the district's not stable, find an alternative.
Oh, thank you very much. It's uh it it's it's nice to hear an answer for um what sometimes we feel is a um a a wall that we have to uh, and I'm not talking about Texas, I'm talking about the wall of ignorance uh that we have to work with in order to get um the people that are in these communities some help that is well needed for many, many years. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the board? And Carolina, I can't see everybody. Maybe you have a better view.
I'm looking as well. If we see any hands, we'll call on you.
Um I have my hand raised.
Please go ahead.
Sure. So just um absolutely want to echo board member um Blaskis's comments. But first, thank you all for the prolific research. I'm just really excited to see so many categorizations from economic um to, of course, like environmental degradation from topography to demography. Like really excited to see that comprehensively, and then just the expertise that Director uh Wilson that you're bringing in, especially for North Carolina. I just really, really want to compliment and then ask my question, but definitely compliment the gerrymandering piece. North Carolina is very unique. And so for us, what we've seen, right, is that this entrenchment of power, let's just call it what it is, where gerrymanders have actually allowed for certain politicians to take funding from the very corporations, where attempting to elevate in the cumulative impact, right? And so it's how are we fighting that disparate impact? At the same time of fighting dark money in politics and just appreciate that elevation. Because in order to really use census data isn't, and we see this across especially the US South, but across the United States, is that census data is not accurate for our communities because many of us are um undercounted. That's point-blank simple. And so Director Wilson, I heard you mention this. What are other ways in which you have seen that you count undercounted census communities? Because we see corporations use that lack of census data to be an excuse to come into our communities. But then we don't see the same kind of pushback or or legal support for us to say, well, wait a minute, we're here. Here are actually the data points that proves this community exists. And I know that for North Carolina, we are eighty percent food insecure, eighty counties out of one hundred counties have food deserts. That's a quick, easy way to find. US Department of Agriculture, other ways that I think about is proximity to fast food. Restaurants that are usually located in food insecure areas and black and brown and low-income populations. Free healthcare clinics for folks who are returning citizens. I think about these kind of elements. Are those straightforward examples, or what are some other examples that can be explicitly documented for us to find our people, to protect them? And I did hear you mention unincorporated again. Um what are other ways to include them? Is that working with utility co-ops? What are some some suggestions that can make it more explicitly for us to to include in a language to DEQ? What does that look like?
Yeah, no, I thank you for the question. And uh yeah, I I I'm I'm big on including all those. I'm very knowledgeable about the rural EJ indicators in North Carolina because I'm with the Chapel Hill, so I did my dissertation on hog farms. So I know all about those types of things that need to be added, right? So the infrastructure ones are very important. So you mentioned uh you got energy infrastructure indicators. That's that's one to look to when it comes to looking at access to clean energy, but also uh cost of energy, right? You have number of renters and all those housing-related indicators that will help you micro-target your communities. I did I did some work, uh and you mentioned it, you you mentioned it already, uh family-qualified health centers. So using your MOA, that's an acronym for medical underserved areas, and your HIPAA that's an acronym for health professional shortage areas. Those are also indicators that you can use. One of the things I said to the, and I'm actually gonna meet with the CEQ people, uh I I did, I I wrote an eighteen-page critique of the CEQ too. So I can actually send you all that critique that gets into some of these indicators. But one of the things that we talked about is, how do you how do you develop race-adjacent or race-proximal indicators? They can kind of capture the experience of racism. That's why I mentioned segregation, I mentioned redlining, right? You you have that. Uh additional indicators, one of the things I think is really important. So uh my colleague, one of my colleagues, Dr. Jackson, maybe mentioned um the CDC places data, I mentioned it too. But using the health disparities data, we've been looking at uh racial ethnic disparities in the healthy people for how many years, thirty, forty years now? So that data is a very important, so you actually look at health disparities at the track level and do health asthma disparities between blacks and whites. You 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 can use that data. So the health disparities data could give you the spatial resolution to look at across your units of analysis, whether it be track-level analysis or block group level analysis, right? So that's important to do. I think also your school districts, use that school district data. Because telling, I mean, it's it's the the story about children is important, but also this is exposure to children as was stated earlier in previous presentations about susceptibility factors, et cetera. That's gonna be important. You also bring in the chip and the and the snap-related stuff oh and and create a uh that's actually a healthy children's index. That'd be another uh uh angle to go. So there's there's multiple things out there that allow you to kind of uh fight back against the the gerrymandering, those type of indicators that kind of undermine, undercount, unreport. And I'll pass the mic, let me say this one last point. Uh Baltimore City actually has their their own kind of neighborhood health uh data. Where I actually have data collected for every actual, every neighborhood, actually in Baltimore. Well, not you can do it to the whole city of North Carolina, but that kind of example is important. New New York State actually has forty-four indicators uh for that climate change uh project around looking at disadvantaged communities. That may be some indicators to look to in New York State, right? And the last, I was gonna say, I'm talking way too much. Oh, uh state of Michigan actually does a uh uh I think a biennial speak to your health survey. So one way to kind of capture the undercount is do that state-level survey to get your own data and and work that through the state health department. So you have this secondary data that can that can go along with the the census data. So I'll stop talking about. I could, I I actually, I'm very excited to talk about data and metrics. I can send you all the CEQ uh critique and I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Sherry.
No, I was I was just thanking Dr. Wilson, and I was gonna ask, I don't see any other hands, but um we still have time for at least one more question before we turn it back over.
Just the, that's a point. So Sheri, should I send the critique to you or who should I send? Share with the team, because it 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 goes into, one thing I didn't say earlier, we actually also talked about, I mentioned real quickly in a response about energy indicators. So with with energy, you have energy type, you have energy quality, you have energy, you have energy choice, energy cost. So those are additional indicators to to get, and I think you mentioned the rural co-ops. That's that infrastructure again. Infrastructure indicator is gonna be very important. So you got you got the 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 stuff you're overburdened by, and our tool too, which I didn't say, I'm sorry, we do have supermarkets in in our in our as a context layer. So you can, you can, if you do the cumulative scoring approach, you may want to have some things in the score, but you may want to have some things outside of score, because you can do an overlay. So you get your score and you overlay with supermarkets. Then you overlay with health, right, like the health disparities, which can help you focus in even more. So you don't have to dump everything into your your score. You don't have to dump every indicator to your score.
I do have one um quick question for you. Um you've done a lot of work in rural areas. How would you approach trying to layer all of the information from rural areas, because those are probably more difficult than more urban and suburban areas?
So one thing you could do, I mean, you you could try to, so you're exactly right. We've we find that the tools, and most in most cases, all these tools are very urban-centric. Some some ways what you should do, uh you have to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. You should separate out your more rural census tracts, wherever your unit analysis, and it's comparing to each other, and you're more urban and compared to each other, because that's gonna be important when you do all these dollars. Like the infrastructure dollars, we think about Justice Forty, those are the benefits. The way you get to the actual benefits, you gotta have investments. So when the monies come into North Carolina uh from the infrastructure bill, right, for ma- for mass transit, for legacy pollution sites, et cetera, et cetera, right? I think it's important to have a policy to make sure urban and urban tracts are being compared and rural to rural. So you have a balance of the distribution of resources to those urban tracts and to those rural tracts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And I will see if there are any other questions.
Excuse me, I'd just like to add something. At the end of Jasmine's presentation, at the bottom of one of the pages, it states that intent does not matter. And I think it's important for us not to stop with just the intent that keep to keep working on what we learned today. And thank you all.
Thank you. Um it it looks like it's seven thirty. Thank you. Um, it, it looks like it's seven thirty, so I, I don't want to be rude, but I want to make sure that we have enough time for our public comment. Uh, Miss Sherri Williamson, are you, are you good for that as well?
Um, it looks like I have one question from, who is not a member of the board, but is the faculty member for Caitlin and Lindsay. Can we allow Dr. Woods to ask that question? It appears she's unable to unmute.
What we can also do is for folks that have additional questions, if they'll send them to Renee, we'll make sure that those questions get answered. Um, absolutely. So if we can do that, that'd be wonderful. Um, I'll go ahead and Renee, I'm assuming we still don't have forums, is that correct?
That's correct, Carolina.
Okay. Uh, so I'm asking that just because, um, we won't need to make a motion to adjourn. I'll simply move us to adjourn and we'll begin the public comment period. So we are now beginning the public comment period. We currently have eleven people who are signed up to speak. Ms. Kramer will announce the names in order in which requests were received. She will also announce who is on deck to comment next. Everyone will have two minutes to provide their comments. If there is time remaining, we will provide an opportunity to those who wish to share a comment to do as follows. Ms. Kramer will ask the participants to use the raise hand feature, which is located on the WebEx screen when you're using your computer. Or you will dial star three if you're on the phone line. Uh, please leave your hands raised until Ms. Kramer calls on you so that you can share your comment. And as soon as that happens, we can, uh, make sure that this process goes as smoothly as possible. So Renee, I'll go ahead and, um, shift it over to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolina. Uh, first, we have Anita Cunningham, followed by Anne Stewart. And Anita Cunningham, you have been unmuted. You may begin.
Okay, thank you. Um, I want to thank everybody for the presentations. That was really very informative and helpful. Um, my name is Anita Cunningham and I am a resident of Robinson County here in eastern North Carolina. I want to thank the board members for having this special session on cumulative impacts. Um, you may already be aware of this, but there are over eight hundred polluters here in Robinson County that include but aren't limited to industrial agriculture as well as the increase in concentrated animal feeding operations, CAFOs, which include both the hog and unregulated chicken processing plants, the largest in the nation. Coal ash contamination, a liquid natural gas facility, solid waste landfills, hazardous waste sites, underground storage tanks, the expanding wood pellet industry that is harvesting our forests as a false renewable energy and shipping these wood pellets overseas for fuel as well as other biogas and related industries. The poultry CAFOs do not require or air or water permits. So any harm resulting is not monitored in any way. Um, the communities as well as the state have no way of really knowing where uh, a, a lot of these operations are even located. These type of operations are causing massive pollution in our community in addition to the fact that the wood pellet industry is deforesting our state at an alarming rate. One of the things that I wanted to ask as I conclude is that you would consider the types of industries using, uh, being considered when doing, um, permitting for environmental impacts on our already overburdened communities as well as consider having a wood pellet session, special session before the end of this year. I want to thank you.
Thank you, Anita Cunningham. Up next, we have Anne Stewart, followed by Amanda Strouderman. I do not see an Anne Stewart on the WebEx. So if you could either raise your hand if you're under a different name or press star three if you're on the phone. All right, we are not getting anyone raising their hand. So we will move on to Amanda Strouderman, followed by Vivian Folk. Amanda Strouderman, you've been unmuted. You may begin.
Uh, thanks so much. And thank you to this fantastic board for all these excellent, and for all these excellent presentations. My name is Amanda Strouderman. I'm with Clean Water for North Carolina. Um, some of the community folks that we work with have come out multiple times to DEQ hearings to make their concerns known about impacts in their communities. They sometimes wait hours to speak only to be told that DEQ is not interested in comments related to that, but only to the particulars of a permit. They're told these permit hearings are not the time or place for discussion about cumulative impacts or health concerns. But when is the time? And is DEQ even willing or able to make these, to take these comments into account when making a decision to approve or deny a permit? DEQ has claimed that they don't have the authority, uh, but as we've heard, um, from the presentation earlier, when it comes to landfill permits, they not only have the authority, but they're mandated to deny some permits. Uh, DEQ recently issued guidance for the solid waste management permits, which gives instructions on how to use DEQ's community mapping system to create EJ reports for applicants. And each applicant is instructed to draw a buffer around their proposed facility, list out the facilities within that area that are polluting facilities, and then examine health data through the EJ tool feature. But there are several problems with this approach. No guidance is given on the size of the buffer. The user's not able to get demographic and health information for a selected area. Instead, DEQ instructs the user to zoom out to four to ten census blocks and average the data for the entire area, which couldn't possibly paint an accurate picture. The information about polluting facilities on the community mapping system is also incomplete and misleading. Sometimes there's one point for multiple facilities or the polluting source doesn't coincide with the mailing address. And there's an entire industry left out of the picture. DEQ does not know the location or even the number of poultry operations in the state and therefore does not include even the largest, uh, poultry operations that can host over a million birds. Given the missing and inaccurate.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time has come to an end. If you would like to submit any written comments, you can do so and we will pass along to the full board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Vivian Folk, followed by Emily Zuccino. And I don't see a Vivian Folk. So Vivian, if you are on the phone, please press star three to raise your hand, or please use the raise hand feature on the WebEx. So I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to Emily Zuccino, followed by Reverend Mac Ledgerton. Emily, you've been unmuted. You may begin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Emily Zuccino and I work with Dogbut Alliance and I'm a member of the Impacted Communities Against Wood Pellets Coalition. I'm grateful that this EJ Advisory Board has focused its attention on cumulative impacts. I thought the presentations tonight were really well done and I appreciate the focus on the complexity and long history of this issue. My comments tonight focus on the often overlooked impacts of forestry and logging, especially the wood pellet industry. The southern US produces more wood products than any other region in the world. And here in North Carolina, we produce and export more wood pellets for biomass energy than any other state in the nation. The wood products industry has substantial and widespread impacts that are not considered in the permitting or the siting process. Industrial logging is disproportionately impacting black and brown communities with pollution, truck traffic, and a degraded landscape that makes it more likely for other polluting industries to locate nearby. Across the south, just one percent of private forest land is owned by black Americans, meaning they are not receiving economic benefits from this industry, but are bearing the brunt of the impacts. In my experience working on this issue in North Carolina, the only opportunity I have for engagement with the agencies that site and permit these facilities is during the public hearings for air quality permits. At these hearings, we are told that the only issue we can comment on are items related to the specifics of the air quality permit. Short of pursuing legal action, there are few avenues to address the many other impacts. The logging from this industry is destroying forests and decreasing resiliency in the face of hurricanes and flooding. The burning of wood pellets for energy puts more carbon into the atmosphere than coal, worsening climate change. And the pollution from the production facilities comes on top of the many other polluting industries in the areas where they locate. Once more, I'm grateful for this advisory board for hosting a special session on this critical issue. And I hope that this board will consider the many impacts of an industry like industrial logging as contributing to the negative cumulative impacts you've discussed tonight. And I also ask that this board host a special session on the wood pellet industry this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Emily. Up next, we have Reverend Mac Ledgerton, followed by Will Hendrick. Reverend Mac Ledgerton, you've been unmuted. You may begin.
Thank you. Um, on the NEPA gov website, there's a publication entitled Considering Cumulative Effects Under the National Environmental Policy Act. Uh, it's a fifty-seven page document on how it's performed and used a cumulative effects analysis. I suggest that the advisory board review this document. And as you, most of you know, federal NEPA regulations require the analysis of direct, indirect, and cumulative effects of proposed projects, including past, present, and future impacts. By contrast, the North Carolina State Environmental Protection Act, CIPA, as amended by, in two thousand and fifteen, requires the state agencies only analyze the direct environmental impacts of proposed actions. In short, our state environmental policies are out of sync with federal NEPA guidelines. So what can we do about this discrepancy between federal and state environmental regulations? A first step would be to expand the purpose of DEQ's environmental impact studies to do more than just document the data of the number and types of direct environmental impacts of existing and proposed facilities in a given area and county. DEQ's EIS is need to not only document, but also to analyze the impact of the combined polluting sources in a given area on both environmental and public health. EIS data collection can also expand the scope of indicators related to both polluting and non-polluting data sources as suggested by the presenters today. Such an analysis with expanded indicators will educate both impacted community residents and local officials of the risk of citing additional highly polluting industries already overburdened in communities by multiple sources of pollution and low quality of life indicators. I urge the advisory board to recommend to DEQ to improve and expand the scope of the scale of the EIS tool and utilize Title VI as a basis for including cumulative impact in its permitting processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Will Hendrick, followed by Lib Hutchby. Will, you have been unmuted. You may begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Will Hendrick and I'm with the North Carolina Conservation Network. I'm thankful for the board's decision to hold this special meeting and hopeful that your ultimate recommendations may help to translate decades of ineffectual agency rhetoric into enforceable state regulation. Tonight, I specifically urge the board to advise DEQ to work with the members of the Environmental Management Commission to operationalize through rulemaking the consideration of cumulative and disparate impacts in the specific context of solid waste management. As you heard earlier, in two thousand and seven, our legislature amended state law to require the denial of solid waste management permits if the cumulative impacts of agency decisions in the host community have a discriminatory effect prohibited by federal civil rights law. DEQ has never once denied a permit on the basis of this law. Indeed, a permit applicant might argue that any such permit denial was arbitrary and capricious precisely because the EMC has not codified the relevant process informing DEQ's permitting decision. Fortunately, the same state law gives explicit authority to the EMC to conduct rulemaking to fill in the gaps. So I'm grateful for this board's consideration of critical related issues. But ultimately, the EMC must act on this issue to ensure environmental justice when DEQ is making permitting decisions through delegated authority. Sadly, our legislature has not yet acknowledged DEQ's obligations under federal civil rights law in other permitting contexts. And DEQ lawyers have claimed the agency can't enforce Title VI in the context of permitting without such a legislative directive. So while I believe rulemaking would be helpful in other contexts, it does make sense to start where EMC's rulemaking authority and DEQ's nondiscrimination obligations are undisputed. This September will mark the fortieth anniversary of the Warren County PCB landfill protests. What better way to honor the legacy of those whose actions gave birth to the EJ movement than by taking authorized, required, and binding steps to better protect North Carolinians from similar discriminatory effects of solid waste management decisions? I hope that you will work to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Lib Hutchby, followed by Kay Raybold. Lib, you have been unmuted. You may begin.
Thank you. Um, as a senior citizen, I would like to think of the term accumulative impacts as what happens to families over time in terms of the social impacts, the health impacts. And I, my particular family is an example of that. In the nineteen twenties, my grandpa had to move from his land because he was illiterate and alcohol took the land, utilities, um, built High Rock Lake, and he had to move. In the nineteen sixties, my father had a farm and I, eighty-five, went through the smack middle of the farm and it changed our lives completely because it took seventeen years just to get the survey done. Now, these accumulative impacts are, as we know, have killed our friends. Elsie Herring has died in Duplin County. People have died in cold from cancer in Roxborough, Goldsboro, uh, Blues Creek. Um, it's just a sad accumulation of grieving and mourning that also comes along with the statistics of the cumulative, the community stressors and effects. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity to listen and learn from all of you. I have done, I've learned from you over and over again. And, um, as we in Chapel Hill now deal with coal ash under the police station and want to be fair about all of it and do the right thing, we do not want, uh, housing on top of coal ash. And we want to be able to say that affordable housing and justice has done for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Kay Raybold, followed by June Blotnick. Kay, you have been unmuted. You may begin.
Uh, can you?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, my name is Kay Rebold and I'm a member of Apple, the Alliance to Protect the People and Places We Live. I live in Raleigh. I appreciate the information provided today by the advisory board and for all your good efforts to protect environmental justice communities in North Carolina. In reflecting about the harm caused to citizens and the environment by the cumulative impact of such polluting and dirty industries as wood pellet factories, biogas and biomass facilities, and concentrated animal feeding operations, CAFOs, I hope that the board will consider making formal recommendations to DEQ, the governor, and the attorney general. Cumulative, cumulative impact must continue to be considered before any new permits are issued for the above mentioned industries to do business in the state. The pollution of the air, soil, and water has been documented to cause severe health problems to people living near wood pellet facilities, CAFOs, biogas, and biomass operations. DEQ is mandated to protect North Carolinians from the degradation of the environment. By continuing to issue permits to polluting industries, the agency violates this mandate. I hope that the advisory board will write a strong and detailed letter to DEQ, the governor, and the attorney general outlining the concerns about the cumulative impact and harm caused by polluting industries in North Carolina and to regulate and restrict these facilities and companies from causing further harm. Cumulative impact, these are two words that have caused enormous suffering and harm to the life community. Please, board members, take action to do what you can to alleviate the suffering caused by dirty industries in North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have June Blotnick, followed by Richie Harding. June, you have been unmuted. You may begin.
Okay, thank you. I'm June Blotnick. I'm the executive director of Clean Air and Sea. And I want to thank you for hosting this special meeting on the cumulative impacts of pollution on communities of color in North Carolina. I also want to thank all the panelists for providing really critical information which will enable us to build a just and equitable permitting system. Also want to thank Anita and Amanda and Mac and so many other speakers. Also want to thank Anita and Amanda and Mac and so many other speakers for bringing up some of the issues I had planned to mention. Um, I do want to, uh, mention Governor Cooper's Executive Two Forty-Six, and that order includes a statement that the cumulative impacts of multiple sources of exposure to environmental stressors in communities and the roles of multiple decision-making entities in addressing the causes that compromise environmental health and quality of life in these communities requires an inter-agency response. So that is very important, and I've been talking for a long time how DEQ needs to be talking to the Department of Health and Human Services. And hopefully, um, with what we're proposing here, that will happen. Um, over the last five years, our organization, um, have opposed, has opposed many, many air permits for facilities located in overburdened communities. We often resorted to filing lawsuits, um, against the state for approving these permits, which we felt allowed emission levels that were clear violations of the Clean Air Act. If we require DEQ to include cumulative impacts, we hopefully will reduce the number of these lawsuits. I also wanted the EJEAB, uh, to know that two of our strategic, um, goals over the next three years are to ensure a just and equitable air permitting system with strong community engagement to address the cumulative impacts of air pollution on communities of color. So we're committed to working on this issue over the long haul. We also will.
Thank you, June. Thank you. If you'd like to submit more comments, uh, you can submit them via email to ej@ncdeener.gov. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Up next, we have Richie Harding. And Richie is our final speaker who signed up beforehand. You have now been unmuted, Rich. You may begin.
First, I want to thank the young people that were here during these presentations. Um, please continue you to press forward in the work that you are doing. It is extremely important. Um, please do not be discouraged by what I might, by what I am about to say. I live in an area that faces a lot of these issues that you are talking about. The poverty, kids trying to sleep, they can't because of the noise that comes from these facilities. This facility is in a black neighborhood. The facility emits dust. Now, do we have that facility on one side of us? On another side of us, I have a hog farm that has been polluting well water for over thirty years. They have been sued, and now they get their trucks and they drive around openly and freely and disperse hog feces into every field that they can get their hands on. I'm telling you, I say that to say this. I'm sick and tired of it. I live in a county where we have pretty much all black elected officials. We have a company that has come in and wreaked havoc. There was a hearing officer's report that said, when it comes to the issues facing black people in your community, we do not find a problem. That was dated May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. I believe those, that hearing officer was assigned by DEQ. We have, air quality have come in and put a testing station in that they later determined, oh, we can't get any data from it. We're to the point to where black lives don't matter in Northampton County to nobody. And it is my focus to start a movement where I got to go to court to prosecute black people for killing black people. Keep doing your job. Stay focused.
Thank you, Richie. So that is the last speaker who signed up beforehand. Uh, we do have five more minutes. Uh, so I, we do have time. If, um, anyone has not signed up and they would like to raise your hand and press star three, or raise your hand via the feature on the WebEx, you can do so now. And if we do not get any additional speakers, um, Carolina, I will turn it back over to you. And it does not look like anyone else is raising their hand. So, um, Carolina, I can turn it back to you, or since, I guess, um, I don't know, Sherri, if you'd like to make any closing comments as well.
Thank, thank you, Renee. Um, so absolutely, we'll let Sherri do some closing comments. Um, and, and before we do that, I do want to thank all of the panelists today that have shared their information and knowledge with us. Thank you very much for providing that. I also want to remind the members that if you have any additional questions for the panelists, you can forward that to Renee, and she'll make sure that the questions get to them. Um, and, uh, that's actually all from me. I'll go ahead and turn it over to, uh, Ms. Sherri White Williamson. And again, thank you, Ms. Sherri White Williamson, for getting this together and helping us have this important discussion. I turn it to you.
Thank you, Carolina. And I also want to thank all of the panelists who have spent a good deal of time making comments um, tonight and preparing very important presentations for all of us to consider. Um, this obviously is just the beginning of a conversation that we hope will continue for a while, um, among the EJ board members with, uh, members of, of DEQ or staff at DEQ, um, culminating in a report, um, very soon, um, and that we will all be working on jointly. Um, we also, uh, want to continue the conversation, not just through a report, but even after recommendations are submitted to DEQ. We want to continue, um, to hear from the community because part of our role as EJE board members is to be responsive um, to the communities that we are supposed to listen to and to represent in the work that we're doing, um, as an EJEAB board. Um, with that, I just want to show my appreciation, send my appreciation out to everyone who did take the time to listen in tonight. I believe that we all heard something that we perhaps had not thought about before, um, that we can take into consideration moving forward. And thanks again to, um, all of the folks who decided to listen in as well, because I think that was an important part of this conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Ms. Sherri White Williamson. Well, thank you all again. I hope you have a wonderful evening, and we will see you at the next EJ board meeting. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Thanks, y'all. Take care.